Open passes, five zero. Executive session, city council will convene in closed meeting is authorized for the permission of the open meetings act, chapter five five one, of the Texas government code. This closed session is in accordance with the Texas government code, legal section five five one point zero seven one, real estate five five one point seven two. This is two, discussion regarding case number twenty three zero eight one four three nine three, DC, VHA, JAA, ONSA versus City of Carrizo Springs, and three, discussion regarding real estate. Okay, going to executive session at five thirty two. Back into open session at five fifty two. Item four, discussion appropriate action regarding case number twenty three zero eight fourteen three ninety three, DC, VHA, JAA, ONSA versus City of Carrizo Springs, no action. Number five, discussion appropriate action regarding real estate, there is no action. So I'm gonna jump to item seventeen, council. Discussion appropriate action to approve variance from ordinance number eight four seven, we've been to water services outside the city limits, between the City of Carrizo Springs, Dimmitt County.
Okay, thank you. I know we have someone from Dimmitt County, we have commissioners, and Mr. Michael, we have three minutes for the presentation, and then I'm off time for the conference.
Thank you very much. I don't know where you normally present from here, but that's fine. Okay, thank you very much for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's Keith Franklin. I'm a private practice attorney from Laredo, and I've been hired by Dimmitt County to look at this issue, and I asked this nice lady to make some copies for us. Thank you very much, and I believe y'all may have this here in front of you, if I'll draw your attention to that. So this is a contract from back in nineteen sixty four. It's not an MOU, it's not an interlocal agreement, it's an actual contract where property rights were exchanged, and it was between Dimmitt County and the City of Carrizo Springs. And what it did was, in exchange for a grant of the water rights by the council on four hundred and twenty-nine acres, which is where the livestock show barn is, and where this sports facility that the county is building, is planned for construction, the exchange was, for those water rights, the county would be guaranteed water to be delivered by the city to that property for free, in perpetuity, unless there's an agreement between those parties to do otherwise. And so I understand that the City of Carrizo Springs has got an ordinance that if you're outside of the city limits, or located in a certain part of the city, that you've got to come and seek a variance in order to still be entitled to water service. But we think whether, we hope, and would urge you to grant the variance, but whether it's granted or not, we believe that the city is contractually obligated to provide water to the county to that, to that piece of property. And I'll draw your attention, if you would, to page three of the document. There's Roman numeral two, and then number two, letter C, there's a star by that, and that's what we believe. There's already an existing meter out there where water's being provided for free to the show barn and those facilities, but C says, "All water reasonably required to operate and maintain any other recreational facility," so, "which may hereafter be established on said land so long as such facilities continue to be maintained and operated by public or nonprofit organizations." So the sports complex would continue to be operated by the Dimmitt County, and therefore we believe that the sports complex would fall under that provision, would be entitled to the water service free charge, according to this contract. Now, there may be something else that exists after this. I've looked, I know the counties looked, and we've not been able to locate anything that says otherwise. So we'd ask that you please consider this when choosing to grant the variance, so that we don't have any other issues hereafter. I'd also like to note that I'm here today with Judge Martha Ponce, Commissioner Urenda, and Commissioner Talamantes, and I believe, if we still have time, they'd like to say a couple words, if you'll allow me.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, Council. I basically just wanted to thank y'all for your time, and ask and request that we work together on this project, as we've worked in other projects in the past. The new park that was recently added for the city, I know that myself and some of the other commissioners were gratefully available and provided transportation of the topsoil that it took to elevate that area where the actual playground is at. And, you know, we're here to work with the community. As long as it's for our constituents, for our community, we're here to work together and we'll do anything we can, as long as it's legal, to provide the service and to work jointly to bring something into our community. So with that said, I ask for the same token of duty back towards the, as long as it's for the community, I think we should just continue to work together. Thank you.
Again, Mayor, City Council, on behalf of the county, Martha Ponce and the county judge, I would like to thank you guys for taking the time to put this on the agenda. I know that we have been going back and forth and trying to get a resolution to this situation. I think at the end of the day, I think what we kind of put out there is that this is something that's gonna benefit this entire community, not only the City of Carrizo Springs, but also the surrounding communities, including Big Wells, Asherton, and Brundage and Catarina. So I just would like for us to continue to work together collectively, and continue having that good rapport that we have. I can say that I've been blessed to work with you, Mayor, and I want to continue to have that relationship with you, with the councilman and councilwoman, because I think it's important that we do a public service, and I think that this sports complex, although it is a big ticketed item in terms of the cost that it's gonna cost the county, I think that at the end of the day, it's gonna be a benefit that weighs way greater than any loss that either the city or the county is going to incur. So I would just, you know, point your attention to that contract that was found, and that you take into consideration that granting us this variance is gonna not only help the community of Carrizo Springs, but also the county as well. Thank you.
May I just add one other point? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
So I'm quite new to this position, as you all may know. I thank Mrs. Alia for keeping me informed and inviting me to come out today. I had made it to other city meetings before, and it's something that I plan to benefit for both of us to work together. I do know, going back to the playground that y'all guys provided for the city, it was a great morale booster, and everybody loved it, and you can see the families out there, not only just families that are participating and utilizing the area, other people driving around, it lifted the morals of the entire city. And that's what we're just hoping that the complex brings to continue to add to that morale, so that we can encourage family time and children to go out and play, which is, you know, we struggle with screen time a lot. So offering these amenities also help to boost the morale of the entire city, and encourage family time within, so, thank you guys, I appreciate it. Thank you.
One quick point. If I may just piggyback off something that Judge Ponce said, which was that we believe it would benefit everybody, so the county does not collect hotel motel tax, but the city certainly does. And so we think that while maybe you're not able to charge for water at the facility, but for events that occur there, any amount of people, tourists that come to town, heads in beds, that stay at your hotels, you'll be able to collect hotel motel tax revenue off of that. So it's not like it's a, it's a loss to the city, we believe it would be a mutual benefit for everyone. Thank you.
I think, I'll let each council member, you know, say their part, but, you know, I do believe it's in the best interest, and it's gonna serve a purpose, you know, I know there's traveling teams that we have, there's no practice fields, and bringing tournaments into Carrizo Springs will bring people to you making, if they're, you know, weekend tournaments, you know, people gotta stay somewhere. My understanding is gonna have a structure.
Yes, sir.
So the water usage is not gonna be an extreme, like I said, you know, we support, you know, what the county does as much as we support what we do to benefit our community, so.
And if I may, Mayor, just off of what you just said, to inform the rest of the council, is that about eighty percent, and maybe even more, of this sports complex is completely turf, is even our landscaping is also gonna be turf. So there's gonna be minimal use of water, to be quite frank with this council, and Mayor, the most water that's gonna be utilized is gonna be in the splash pad area, and at that, it's going to be kind of, it's a recycled water system, so it's kind of like a swimming pool that's gonna be underwater, and you have the splash pad on top, and it'll be recycling that same water. Aside from that, you have your, obviously, the utilities, the restrooms, the concession stands, and that's it. We're gonna have a couple of trees that we're gonna put out there, but other than that, all the fields to include the baseball fields, the soccer fields, and the football fields are completely turf, so they will not require any kind of water utilization in terms of issue that I know that was posed in the past to Commissioner Urenda and I in regards to the position of this honorable counsel, is that there's issues with the water reserves and how we are now seeing a depletion in water. I can assert to you that this sports complex, although it may be very large in size, the scale of its size, it's not gonna utilize as much water as other sports complexes, because we are not using any kind of regular grass or sod to put on there, it's gonna be artificial turf, to include, like I said, the landscaping as well, with a minimum of several trees.
Anything you wanna say?
Sure, well, first of all, thank you for providing information. We will provide this to attorney today, just as a reminder, you can, the joint meeting is where you can discuss water accounts and any of that information today, it's only the ordinance. I just speak with Mr. Camarillo, our public works, just to make sure, I think we also have support, the recommendation to approve the variance, but we are asking, I spoke with Mr. Urenda, they already have the meter, so it's not something that we would have to purchase, and, Mr. Urenda, correct me if I'm wrong, but you would probably do the work for the actual installation, connection, so that isn't also something that the city would have to incur any cost, they're doing the work. We do ask that if you approve the variance, though, that our water department supervises the work. We also, because you're getting water from the city, that we would need the permits done by the city, so we can make sure that the backflow, which is required, is done in the locations that's needed as well. So those are the recommendations that we're making. Mr. Camarillo also mentioned there needs to be a vote for the meter, so, and speaking of my, to that recommendation.
I just have a couple of questions. This contract is about sixty years old, right?
Yes, ma'am.
About my age. So it's kind of old, and I didn't really stay, you know, this long, and usually you go and you update your contract, you update your documents, right, to reflect current rates, current law, and, you know, and all that kind of procedures and policies. So with that said, when you plan something, you would think you would address all this before planning it, before actually putting out there with the community, you know, I think you would have all this in place, instead of working backwards. And the other thing I wanna say, if...
I can give you an answer to that, Ms. Wolden, as a matter of fact, because that question has been posed to us before. The reason for that, it's not necessarily a matter of working backwards, it's a matter of, as you're well aware, this ordinance that Ms. Garcia had brought up to the attention of this council and to the county about getting a variance, as you can, obviously, we have the rodeo arena built out there, we have the sheriff's department that was built after nineteen sixty-three, that was built after this ordinance was put into place, and the architect, there was never, this was never an issue that was brought up before city council, it was an issue that was not brought up before the previous city managers neither. So when the rodeo arena got built back in twenty seventeen...
Eight years ago.
Eight years ago, when it got built, eight years ago, obviously, it was a different city manager, and some different city councilmen as well. When it was built back then, the same things were done in terms of water, it was never an issue, the city went out there, they tapped into the water that was there pre-existing, so this was never a concern. So when we decide, when we, it got approved to build this sports complex, and the sports complex went on and on and on, and this was approved when, at the time, city manager Chris Casalera was here, because I had that same conversation with him, it was not, neither an issue at that time either, it just recently got brought up. So to answer your question, we weren't working backwards, it was just that we were going based off the precedents that we had, and that precedence, historically speaking, was never a problem for the county to have to get this variance. And like I said, the rodeo arena got built after this variance ordinance was put into place, the sheriff's office and any additions to the sheriff's office was built after this ordinance was placed. So there was never an issue before, is what I'm trying to say, and now it is, and that's fine, we are, we will follow the law, we will do what needs to be done to resolve it and to make it right. We're not going to just completely say that heck with whatever ordinance is there, because it was done that way back eight years ago. We're gonna still follow proper protocol and policies, as you mentioned, but I just wanted to answer your question, we are not working backwards. We did everything that was necessary, and when this project got approved by Dimmitt County, and the architect got approved to move forward with the blueprints, and we did the bids and everything, at that time, we were advised, at the time, whoever the city manager was, we were good to go, and that's what we did. So we didn't know that this issue was gonna come up, to be quite honest with you.
Thank you. And the last two, I'm sorry. Yes?
I tend to believe, honestly, that the previous administration, both city and county, were aware of this contract, and that's why it probably did not become an issue. Because when these conversations started, the older generation, so to speak, kept approaching me and saying, "There's a contract, there's a contract, there's a document, there's a document." I wasn't aware about it, obviously, but I wanted lean on believing that the previous administration knew about this. Obviously, more people knew about it that were involved with it back at the time than us, the younger generation, so to speak. But I wanna say that's why it wasn't an issue, because they had that in hand on both ends, so it was just moving forward from there, and so that's...
Yeah, but I think that we, did we look for something that was...
Back then?
And we didn't find anything?
If it was never brought up, if it ever has got a contract.
Oh, really?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Yes, we did. The only thing we found was for the golf course.
Before you were here.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Before me, yes.
Yes, and that's why I'm saying, before Ms. Garcia came on board, from my distinct, and it's unfortunate, because our architect's not here, and he was supposed to be here, because he's the same architect that worked with the county, and at that time, at that time, obviously, I wasn't the county judge, it was Mr. Ponce, they worked hand in hand as well, and Mr. Casala advised me, advised Mr. Urenda and Mr. Franklin, that that was never an issue before, there was never an issue about having to, the city just went out there and they tapped into...
And I always thought, I thought you all had your own water well for the rodeo arena and everything.
And I think that's where the ambiguity comes in, because everybody was in different positions as to what really was, was to be had of the whole situation, because you are right, I've had people tell me, you know, "Well, doesn't the golf course have water wells out there?" Unbeknownst to people that they're completely, they're not even in working condition, but they think the golf course works off of those water wells. And I had people approach me, like, "Why don't you not just use a water well and run it to the, to the sports complex?" But that's easier said than, obviously, and that wasn't how it was before. So there was never an issue, and as you said, it's not with Ms. Garcia here, since Ms. Garcia got here is when we started finding out all these things.
I, I can feel that we can work something out with county, you know, it's really, the city water, the Dimmitt County water, is the water of all of us, okay? Back in two thousand and five, the city, I was the council at that time, there was a lawsuit against the city of Carrizo by the Ivy, because for the water well is, the land belonged to the Ivies. And basically, the main reason for the lawsuit was, the Ivy wants to sell the water rights to Laredo, they want to build a water line all the way to Laredo. We had to go to federal court, and actually, the city, the judge was in favor of the city, so we still had the water right there now. And basically, I feel that we can work something out with the county, because without water, Carrizo would not be here, we all need the water. So let's all be reasonable, work something out, it'd be good for the county, but it'd be good for the city too. Work together, I'm all for it.
Well, I kind of feel the same way, Mr. Ponce, and when it comes down to, you know, this contract was established back in nineteen seventy, and as you can see on the motion, it wasn't a huge majority that everybody voted for, three against two, two abstaining, and it was three against two. So there must have been some doubts as well with that, right? I true believe that we can work something out, but at the same sense, I listen to our residents and say, "Hi, we can't be giving everything for free, yet alone, we're the ones expected to pay the taxes for the upkeep of our infrastructure for the water. Is the county helping you guys with it?" And I said, "Man, it doesn't work that way." You know, we can't control what's out in the county, we can only try to mediate and govern within our city limits. And that's why, unfortunately, like Judge Ponce has here mentioned, unfortunately, there's administrations in the past that did this and just kept rolling with it, and as you all know, we don't sit here forever. There's councils that can change, there's legislative decisions that are gonna change as well, as we go along, you know, and we adjust as rolling times come on. You know, we got approached not too long ago by the, by the winter conservation district, they're fixing to get some more measures on this to regulate the water. You know, water is light. So again, I feel that we should do this, but in the sense, it is for our great interest to do for our community, but at the same time, we can't just keep going and saying, "Okay, we're gonna do this and then get the input." Like, right now, we didn't know anything about this contract, because we did our due diligence trying to get any type of information, now it's said we're presented with a contract that even our legal has not even revised. So really, how can we make adjustments with something?
So you can discuss the approval of a variance, but we can't discuss whether the water's gonna be free of charge. Now, just a reminder, we are having a discussion on the tropical agreement and water counts next week, by then, we can have enough time to review this, and then you can discuss that, but that's not on the agenda.
And I certainly agree, because, again, let's say that we have another entity that goes outside of the city limits, right, and they approach us with the same type of understanding, hey, we want free water, or we want a variance on it. I have no, I agree as well on the variance, but I just wanna make sure that we get into that discussion about the cost of it as well.
I was gonna say, sort of the thing, first of all, I think everyone in here knows that it's not about that we don't wanna work together, this has been in the past, it's always been the city and the county. I think it's mostly about, the new thing that we discovered, Asalia's done an exceptional job, I noticed something fell on her plate that we did not expect, right, and yes, from previous administration, previous council and all that, but nonetheless, she discovered them, and when she discovered them, she visits with our attorney, and he guides us, right, he guides them, before the thing like, like, don't, the city cannot give out free water. I mean, all these, and it was not just the county, it was not just the county, it was other entities, you know, and so it's a small town, so everyone heard. So in my opinion, it was that we needed to follow what the attorney told us, and she would constantly, she's been listening, and even today, I think I asked her, and she was listening to me. And the other thing is, just remember, it's not about, I don't think any of us, it's about not working with you. I know it's not for me, it's not for me, it's not about that. It's not about what we want for our kids, if anyone knows me, I'll do anything for kids, right? This is my home, I was born and raised here, so we're doing, we are doing investment, investments for our community. I think the big part is, we just got this, and reading it real quick, and we did not know, I know that they had looked, and that really, the most important thing is what the attorney had mentioned, Asalia, and we had to make sure that everything was in place. I think that was the biggest thing, because we have, for example, we have cemetery. We personally, we don't have a problem with water, the cemetery is our cemetery, those are, my mom's there, right, my baby's there, my brother, my father, so why not? So we give it to here, I always say, you're gonna do with one kitten, you're gonna do with the other, you're gonna do with this. Honestly, I don't think that's the issue, it's just the procedures that we need to follow.
May I respond briefly? Yes, and I understand this is part of a larger issue that the city's having to look at, is everywhere that we're giving free water, and making sure that you all are doing your due diligence to see whether that's a good idea or not for your constituents. All that we're saying is, with respect to this one in particular, there is a contract, and like you're saying, yes, it's very old, and if you'd like the county to consider an amendment to it, or an update, or something like that, that would, that would have to be presented to the county. As it stands right now, just as to this property, there is a contract that governs it. As far as, you know, we would like to work together, you know, but when it comes to other facilities and other places where water's provided, but, you know, as it stands right now, yes, it's a very old contract, and it's, and it, and it does say it's forever, it's in perpetuity, so until there's something done different, this is, this is what really is there, but I think...
Let me ask you, who owns?
I'm sorry?
Who owns the golf?
Who owns the golf course? I was not asked to look at that issue, that's probably not a question for the golf course? The county?
The county does, the county.
Well, in regards to that, Ms. Wolden, is if you look on the first page on here, where it says, "Be the four hundred and twenty-nine point sixty-six acres," that is called...
If the golf course is within the four hundred and twenty-nine, that's what we're talking about.
So the county owns the golf?
Correct.
Not a private organization, or any other...
And it's not, this is not a one-sided agreement, and I think maybe it feels that way, but at the time, what was exchanged was, in exchange for free water to the county, they gave the water rights to the city for this four hundred and twenty-nine acres. There were two wells in existence at the time, and it gives the right to the city to drill one additional well out there, so...
You know, I understand this, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I know what it is, you know, we do have elderly that get the water shut out, because they don't have payments, because their, their checks is not enough, right? But yet, you know, we have something like this that, you know...
And I'll just say, to that point, you know, we all have the same tax base, I mean, the county has other parts of the county from which to derive revenue, but city taxes its citizens, county taxes its citizens, and then when the city charge, I think that's the spirit of agreements like this, is we've already taxed everybody, and then now to make a water payment as between two taxing entities might feel to your constituents as like an additional tax, versus we've already been taxed, so why wouldn't they, you know, work something out where water could be provided for free between there? And I think that's where, and I've seen other agreements like this, I do work for other counties, and that's sort of why these kind of exist. I don't know, maybe you would have a complaint, so, oh, those guys at the county, they want everything for free. Here, you can say, well, my hands were tied back in nineteen sixty-four, you know, there's not a lot we can do unless we amend or update this, but I think that's the spirit of that, is so that you're not hitting up the same people again for something that they've already paid taxes to both of you on, if that makes sense.
Then what you said is key, unless you amend it, and that's all I want, for me to know that I can stick that line, that everything was the right for her, and it was Bobby, and it read this, that we just got this, I was trying to...
No, but you're not deciding on this, you can't take any action here, you're only deciding on the very, I'm, you know, thank you for bringing it, and we can discuss this next week, but right now, you can only make a motion and just approve the variance.
With a variance, it can be free, or it can be...
No, 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 it's just, it's just an allowance for variance.
Okay.
Next week, there can be a discussion about the water accounts.
Which is, yes, for that meeting, on the agenda for next week's meeting...
Is the water accounts.
Is the water accounts to include the sports complex, to include the golf course, the placita, and then the fire station. So today, today was just to memorialize the variance to approve.
Hey, I had never seen this contract, but way back in the early two thousand, late nineties, the question, the water to the golf course came up, and at that time, the city council said that there was a contract. I never, I was the city council at that time, but I never did see the contract, this is the first time I see it, you know?
That was a separate agreement. That was a separate agreement.
This was separate.
But that was between the city of Carizo Springs and the Golf Course Association when they were legal.
Oh, I think this is what I'm looking for.
I, it, when you're ready to vote, we're, Mr. Camarillo and I are just asking that, if you put forth in a motion, if you do the stipulations so the variance are again, that the meter is purchased by the county, the work is done by the county, with the inspections, the permits done by the city and the work being inspected by our water department to ensure the backflow, everything else is done according to this. And that's a force done to make sure that our water sources are not being contaminated.
Okay. Who wants to go ahead and make the motion? I have number seven, please.
Make a motion to approve the variance from artin's number 8.7. We made it through water services outside of the limit between the city of Carizo Springs and Dimmitt County.
With stipulations?
You can include the stipulations I stated.
Stipulations, yes, yes, yes. If you're going to, the city managers going to, right?
The stipulations that the county has already purchased the meter, will do the work for the connection, this and that the plumbing permits are done with the city and the work is...
Yes, to add that the county has purchased the meter and that they'll follow all the ordinance and all the inspection tasks for our city marshals.
Thank you.
The city guidelines.
Okay. It is moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Texas, are you there?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, County.